All right, I think it's 20 seconds. All right, I'd like to call the July 20th Board of Education work session to order. Do we, let's see, we need to, you will all join me in a moment of silence? All right, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all in favor? All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Johnson and Mr. Anderson Bailey, all in favor? Financial report.
Yes ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax, East Plast Five Distribution for May was $1,594,542, which is an increase of $21,572 from the previous month. The Adverorum Tax Collection for May was $629,056. And finally, the business department has begun the process of closing out the fiscal year 2021. As part of that process, July and August tax collections are accrued into the fiscal year as well as July and August payroll expenses for 10 and 11-month employees. And the final ending fund balance will be available in October. And that is the financial report.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about the financial report? We'll be going to strategic plan.
Just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just could we get a attachment copy to look? It's the normal financial report?
We don't normally prepare one for June because we're still closing the books. I could do it once it's done, once we're done closing the books, but that wouldn't be until October, but I could still do it then if you wanted it.
Okay.
I don't know if this is on.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Strategic plan.
Oh, good evening. I was so enthralled in today. Student achievement and success, I'm going to combine items one and two and paraphrase them because both of them speak to our summer instructional programs for all of our students throughout the school district. If you read deeply into both of those items, you'll see some of the activities and opportunities that our students, all the way from elementary school to high school, had. We were so happy, all of the programs ran for five weeks with the exception of, of course, our creative programs, Camp at Night, which of course ran for two weeks. But you'll see there with the Little Scholars Program in elementary school, we had two sites, one at Live Oak and one at Newton County Theme School. They met Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the high schools and middle schools had a similar schedule as well. This was a Herculean task that could not have been able to be carried out had it not been for the support of the other departments such as school nutrition, who provided our meals. We were able to provide transportation to students who needed transportation. Our technology department was on staff as well, helping to support us technologically. And just all in all, it has been, it was a great program. And we have survey results from students as well as the teachers who worked, you know, both programs. And so it was wonderful. We've already had people to ask us if we were going to do these programs next year. So that's the paraphrased version of items number one and two. High-quality workforce, the human resources staff conducted a virtual new hire meeting on June 24th, 2021 with approximately 113 new certified teachers and support staff. The newly hired individuals were greeted by the human resources team, who shared onboarding information pertinent to the hiring process and personnel items that must be completed by the individuals. Culture, climate, and communication, the NCSS Public Relations Department personnel recently won eight national awards for publications from the National School Public Relations Association. These included five awards of excellence in writing, two awards of merit for the 2018-19 annual report, and the We Are NCSS magazine, and one award of honorable mention for the electronic publication, NCSS Board Note. So congratulations to Ms. Sherri Partee. It says department personnel, but actually it's department right now, one. So these are all the result of her efforts. So congratulations, Ms. Partee. Organizational and operational effectiveness, the nutrition department personnel continue to support students during the summer by providing meals through the school system's Seamless Summer Food Program. And those are the items that are, just a few of the highlights from the report that that's a part of the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much. Yes, yeah, when you were reading about personnel, I was thinking that. I was like, I think there's only one. Congratulations, by the way. One thing to note, special recognition is that she just got remarried, or married, excuse me, and will you change your official voice when you do the cadence?
Just the name.
Just the name. The foot of Mary Jo, are you going to change the name? Okay, so we'll need to make sure that we're aware that instead of Sherri, it is from the same person.
You'll recognize the voice and the cadence and the...
All right, moving on, we have no old business, so now we'll move on to our new business in items A and B. We will need a vote taken tonight on these two.
Yes ma'am. In item A, the superintendent recommends the approval of the renewal of the charter contract with Newton College and Career Academy for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2026. The original charter for the College and Career Academy was approved by the Georgia Department of Education in May 2010. This deals with strategic goal area one and four. There's a copy of the contract and the local board resolution there for your review. That is item A, Madam Chair.
All right, are there any, do we have a motion to approve item A?
So moved, second.
Well, Ms. Bailey and Ms. Anderson Bailey. All right, is there any discussion? No discussion? And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Is approved. Moving on to item B.
In item B, the superintendent recommends the school supplies needed for the school system be purchased from Griffin Reeser of Griffin, Georgia. The total cost is $204,183.79. Strategic Goal Area 1, purchasing documentation is there for your review, and the funding source is SRT2 funds. And that is item B for action tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve item B?
Salute.
Ms. Anderson Bailey, a second. Mr. Anderson Bailey, is there any discussion?
I have a question. Was there no way, like, that this could have been purchased? I'm just looking at school districts, and I know this is to go out to schools that need it. I mean, I know we usually do a purchase, but there were a couple of school districts that use their Charis money to purchase school supplies, so was there no way to do this?
That's, yes ma'am, that is the SRT2 funds that we're utilizing for that.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. My mind is somewhere else. You did say that.
I can't believe that.
No, it didn't, trust me, Mr. Johnson, it's somewhere else tonight. So my bad, I do see that on there now.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is the same thing that several other school districts are using their funds to give supplies to the students that are in need. All right, any other discussion for this item? If none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Pass this, thank you. All right, moving on to item C.
In item C, the superintendent recommends the elementary math instructional resources needed for the school system be purchased from Savas Learning Company. The total cost is $50,143.12. Savas Envision Math 2.0 is a comprehensive math curriculum for grades K through 5. It provides focus, coherence, and the rigor needed for students to master the Georgia standards of excellence. Teachers will have physical and digital access to student workbooks and teacher additions. Envision Math 2.0 provides students with opportunities to practice, model, and problem-solve as they make progress and achieve mathematical proficiency. This deals with strategic goal area one, purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is SRT2 funds. And that is item C, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
Just a question. You guys had the opportunity for math teachers at elementary level to look at this and give input?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Not looking, move on to item D.
In item D, the superintendent recommends the online curriculum needed for the school system be purchased from Edgenuity Incorporated. The total cost is $247,930. Edgenuity's curriculum will be utilized to provide a self-paced, virtual instructional option for students who select that educational model. Edgenuity is a leading provider of online and blended learning solutions, offering a comprehensive suite of Cognia-accredited K-12 digital curriculum. Edgenuity works on computers, laptops, Chromebooks, and tablets, and students will be able to access the program through the school system's single sign-on class link. The purchase includes all necessary site licenses and allows the school system to provide continuity and institutional rigor regardless of instructional model. This deals with strategic goal area one, purchasing documentation is provided as well as the funding source. And that concludes that item, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion for item D?
Yeah, I have one, Madam Chair. So I have a question on the Edgenuity. Did we have the opportunity to get feedback from last year, or what was the overall concerns? Just want to make sure that those were taken care of before we look at, like, a continuation.
Yes, we did have a process. We used a, what I call it, a program review process. So we had our principals, instructional coaches, assistant principals, teachers. It was about 25-plus of us on this actual committee. So what we did was everyone was provided a rubric. We had different vendors come in. We had a total of four vendors to come in that particular day. We spent the entire day, they presented, they gave us actual demo licenses to go in to troubleshoot, and then everyone gave their feedback based on that. So based on that actual process, then I can read you some of the comments that that were given to us as far as, at this particular time, we don't want to get a new platform. And then let's look, even though we saw some good things, but definitely at this particular time, just staying with Edgenuity because that's what we're familiar with. But they did, as far as some of the concerns that they had, Edgenuity has done some upgrades, so we're excited about that and looking forward to continuing within the school year.
Okay, I said one question, Dr. Mosley, I got another question. I'm sorry. So how open is Edgenuity with feedback from districts? Like, so when you guys do something like that, do they have a representative or somebody, a liaison that you guys can meet and deal with problems with?
Yes, and they will also, what I like about them is that they'll work with the districts. So, for example, they do parent meetings, but we just have to reach out and tell them what we need, and then they'll work with us. They'll co-present with parents, they'll co-present with teachers, but we just have to tell them what we need.
Okay.
And they adjust.
Okay. And the turnaround time is usually quick, or was there any parts where it was kind of, because I know a number of districts was using this. So were there timeframes where it took a little time?
I can't say last year, and they were very transparent about that. A lot of districts were coming on all at the same time, so they did have a delay, but I can tell you, our contact person, I have the personal cell phone numbers, and we can text them, and they respond back, our professional learning person, first-name basis with everyone on our team. So definitely with last year, the response time was delayed, but this year, we're on it.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question, or two? How many students have currently registered? Because this is going to be the platform we use for our VIP, right? And so how many students have registered for the VIP?
Do you want to jump in, Dr. Merritt?
Come on, Dr. Merritt. And for those who don't know, this is Dr. Merritt, he's our coordinator of the virtual program. Do you have, do you have numbers?
Good evening. We have, currently we have about 342 students that are enrolled.
Okay, 342. All right, and we're, and we're only offering the VIP for grades?
Three. Three through 12.
Three through 12. So was there any cost change? Like, were you able to back anything out of it since you couldn't use it for K through 2?
Well, we can, we opted to continue it as it is because this will still give whole district access. Each school will still receive a license so that at any time that we may have to pivot in a school or on a grade level, they are ready to go. And that was one of the reasons I think Dr. Mosley was speaking of, about them wanting to remain with something unfamiliar, because by and large, most of the teachers won't be, you know, they can use this as a supplement, but if we ever have to pivot, they're already familiar with the, you know, with the system.
Yeah, that's a good plan. Good thinking.
I do have another question, if you're done, Mr. Bailey?
Sure.
Okay. My other question is, because we did ask for those numbers a while back, is there a way we can have a breakdown by grade, by grades of the numbers?
Oh yeah, we have that, we can get that early some, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If they're on then, we can move on to item E.
In item E, the superintendent recommends a professional development service needed for the school system be purchased from Michael Selkis. The estimated cost is $212,800. Mr. Selkis will partner with the school system, building on the work that started in 2019-20, to provide equitable and inclusive learning and work environments at all levels of the district in direct support of the strategic plan. He will use research-based processes to provide both system-wide and school-specific analysis and assistance in the areas of classroom time management, instruction and engagement, student achievement, program design, cost and sustainability, and stakeholder perceptions. This deals with strategic goal area one and two. Contract documentation is there for your review as well as the funding source, and that is item E, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions or discussions from our board members?
Just who will participate in that training?
Well, good evening. We now have started our second cohort. So the first cohort consists of Hurt mixing, East Side, and East Newton. And the second cohort will consist of the Career Academy, Port Adele, Cousins, and Livingston.
Okay. And I can look on here to see how many visits that is and all that, right? That's in here?
Yes.
Is there any other question? If none, people would want to, item D.
In item F, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The first is File Wave, which is a technology asset management software, total cost $67,209.84. And Bridge Tech Solutions, which is a network and email security software, total cost $86,854.5. Strategic Goal Area 1, strategic goal area 4, purchasing documentation is provided as well as funding source, and that is item F.
Any questions or discussion? On then, we will move on to item G.
In item G, the superintendent recommends the computers and associated items needed for the career, technical, and agricultural education program be purchased from ByteSpeed LLC. The total cost is $201,345. Summary of the recommended purchases is provided for your review. This deals with strategic goal area 1, student achievement and success. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source is FY22 CTAE funds. And that is item G.
Thank you. Any questions? If they're on then, we'll move on to item H.
In item H, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with Newton County Sheriff's Office for school resource officers be renewed for an additional contract term. The effective date is July 1, 2021, and the expiration date is June 30, 2022. The total cost is $1,099,575.30. This deals with strategic goal area 3 and 4. Contract is available for your review as well as the funding source, and that is item H.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions, sorry, from the board members? If I have any? I think if none, we'll be going to...
In item I, the superintendent recommends the adoption of a resolution requesting the assistance of the Georgia Department of Education Facilities Section in the development of a five-year local facilities plan. It is anticipated the updated plan will be ready to be adopted by the Board of Education no later than March 13, 2022, for subsequent approval by the State Board of Education. An outline in the memo are the components of the facilities out, facilities plan. This deals with strategic goal area 4, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the resolution is there for review. That is item I.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Will that be in a scheduled meetings update as to how this and what will be transpiring during the time?
So typically, we come back and present all of that information to the board for action, be presented at a work session for your adoption. And just as a reminder, this deals with state capital outlay funding, so it's a way to maximize funding from the state.
I understand that, but what I don't want to happen is that you presented, this is a lot of information, and that we have time to digest the information that you are putting together, not when you get it all together. That's my view of it.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, Mr. Johnson. So...
Because this is, if I remember correctly, I know Sharp activity, it's been on this report, I think, for two cycles or three cycles. So I want to make whatever sureness I can that it doesn't go on this report again.
Right. And so Sharp is not a part of the five-year local facilities plan because it's a closed school? It is a part of our capital improvement plan. And so this work only applies to those schools that are open for which we can receive funding from the state.
So will you just keep a surprise of your meetings and things when y'all are going through this to let us know before even this presented in work session, maybe? Just like a web based update?
Yes, ma'am.
So just for clarity, when we come to vote on this next week, we're going to be approving the state board, approving the state board's help in creating this plan?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're not approving the five-year plan till we get to look at it? That's, okay.
Yes, right.
Good. Just understand, trying to understand all this. I think I got it.
Yes. All right, so if there are no other questions for item I, we'll move on to you, Jay.
In item J, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts awarded to the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The first is Osborne Electrical Contractors. The estimated contract value is $125,000. And the second is Air Conditioning Specialist Incorporated, estimated contract value $450,000. This deals with strategic goal area 4, organizational and operational effectiveness. The contract documentation is there for your review as well as the funding source. And that is item J, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion for item J? If there are none, we will move on to K.
In item K, the superintendent recommends the milk and ice cream needed for the school system be purchased from Mayfield Dairy Farms LLC of Athens, Tennessee. The estimated contract values are $650,000 for milk and $35,000 for ice cream. This deals with strategic goal area 4, organizational and operational effectiveness. Purchasing documentation is provided, and the funding source are FY22 School Nutrition Program funds. That is item K for consideration.
All right, any questions? Then we will move on to item L.
In item L, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for a safety and sanitation program be awarded to Sanitec Systems of Lakeland, Florida. The effective date will be July 28, 2021. Expiration date will be July 27, 2022. Estimated contract value is $43,778.88. This deals with strategic goal area 4. Contract documentation is provided, and the funding source is FY22 School Nutrition Program Funds. And that is item L.
Thank you. Is there any questions from our board members? Then we will move on to item M.
In item M, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. This deals with strategic goal area 4, and the surplus list is provided for your review. And that concludes item M.
Any questions? If none, we can move on to item N.
In item N, the super...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. In item N, the superintendent recommends the local board governance annual report be completed as required by the Georgia Department of Education. This deals with strategic goal area 4, and the training report is attached there for board members review.
Any questions?
I think I might have more than you.
You do.
Okay.
You do, and we just submit the minimum requirements, but we have on file all of the things that you've done, and GSBA has them if you've done them through GSBA. But if you want us to, we certainly can put them in there if you wish.
Yeah, we do update it for me, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson Bailey, you are in the same boat, and I think Mr. Eddie Johnson, you're in the same boat as well. Would you like for us to include all of the credit hours that you earned? We just put the required number in there.
I'm fine.
You're fine with that?
I'm fine.
You're fine, okay.
Any bonus points for being in person in Savannah?
Well, you know, people like, public people, your constituents can pull it, so I want mine know it correctly.
Absolutely.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, I like...
We got some bonus points for everybody's extra activity. Well, we got a high-performing board.
I don't know.
All right.
They do write that, though, for GSBA, for the quality of work, so you do need to make sure the units are correct when you turn any information to them.
Okay, all right, so we will make those changes for next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Janine and I actually talked about it earlier today, so we were prepared for this. Yes. We just didn't know how you wanted to do it.
If you're going to do the report over, go ahead and do it.
Perfect. We'll take care of it.
All right, so moving on to item O.
In item O, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session.
All right, do we have a motion to approve item O? Send them up, Mr. Bailey. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass this. Any other matters of interest?
I do have one. It's an item that we actually already discussed. I just want somebody, Dr. Varr, if you would just kind of read over item H clause 4B. I just want to make sure that's worded correctly, like, when you get a change.
Okay.
Because I don't, the way I read it, it reads as if it's an old contract, so I just want to make certain that it's reading correctly. It's H4B.
Okay.
It's about a canine.
Okay.
Some of the wording in there, it just feels outdated.
Yes.
Okay, I'll look at it.
And if there's any changes that you've made that, will you let us know before next week?
Yes.
Just if there's a change to the agenda.
Yes, we will make sure you're there.
Other matters of interest?
Yes, Madam Chair. First, I wanted to acknowledge that we welcomed our new teachers to our school system yesterday. We started the BEST Teacher Program, which BEST stands for Building Excellence and Supporting Teachers. And Ms. Shondrea Neely and Dr. Karen Dozier and a handful of other folks really worked hard on preparing and putting this program together. And it lasts Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I had the great pleasure this morning to talk to them and to have a conversation with all of our new teachers, and was so excited to see that so many of the teachers are our graduates, and they are returning to come back and provide service to our community. So that was really exciting. And there are several of our staff members who are returning, who left and who are coming back to us. And in the, in the school, in the chat, I have them say, "I'm back." And so it was really an awesome experience today to get a chance to meet with them. Our veteran teachers and our veteran staff will be returning on the 22nd, and I'm just really excited to welcome them back to our buildings, considering all of the hard work, dedication, commitment, and my goodness, the insurmountable, it almost felt like, challenges that we faced last year, and I'm so proud of them and do my very best to make sure that they are aware of it. And they will be back on the 22nd of July and begin the work for the 2021 school year. And I just want to say to be on the lookout for my official first FY22 video that I will send out sometime this week, before Friday, to give parents an update on... send out sometime this week, before Friday, to give parents an update on where we're headed and to provide information about our plans, and also to, you know, keep us posted about the fact that we still are dealing with a pandemic, and we've got to keep our eyes on the numbers and adjust accordingly. And so we'll send, I'll have a video that will go out, and then that will be followed up with an email to our staff as well, and they'll have an email coming soon. So I'm just really excited about the 2022 school year. I think we're going to accomplish amazing things, just with our veteran staff returning and then having the opportunity to interact with the folks who are new to our system. Everybody just is fired up and ready to support our students and keep them number one, and then we are, we've got plans in place to take care of our, our staff. So I'm just really fired up, and I think the whole team in, in here would say the same thing. We are, we are tired, but we're ready, and we're just really excited to, to get the school year started. So thank you, Madam Chair.
That's great, thank you so much. All right, if there's nothing else?
Okay. I'm sorry, I was just trying to write down the dates. As always, I like to thank those community members who every year take it upon themselves to go out and do a back-to-school supply drive for the students in our system. The Newton County Sheriff's Department one is this Saturday. Stephanie Lindsay, attorney, always does one every year, hers is August seventh. And Zianka Roseberry, who is a trainer here locally, she's doing one the last Saturday in July. So thank you to those community members, because they do not have to do it, but they continue to do it every year, so thank them.
Absolutely, right, thank you. All right, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
So moved.
Mr. Bailey and Mr. Johnson, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we move on to Bailey. Thank you.
Yes, all in favor, aye.
All right, we earn our... I'm going to go make some... If not, I'll just be... Before you walk, walk out, did, what did you do?